Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the regular meeting of the Englewood Cliffs Mayor and Council. Today is September 12th, 2018. It's 8:24 PM. And a big welcome to the Little League team here tonight, the 10U Championship Team. Welcome, and we'll speak more on that in a few minutes. Let's start our meeting the way we always start our meeting with a roll call.
Mayor Cranjack.
Here.
Councilperson Zaverta.
President.
E Park.
Here.
O, here. McMorro, here. M Park.
Here.
Wu.
Here.
Borough Attorney.
Head.
Borough Administrator.
Here.
Borough Clerk and Superintendent of DPW.
Here.
Everyone's present, Mayor.
Great. So we always start our meetings with the Pledge of Allegiance, so I'd like the Little League team to lead us tonight, okay? So everybody please rise, face the flag. Ready? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the great colors of its presence, on the nation under God, indivisible, and omnipotent. Would everybody please remain standing? Yesterday was September 11th, which marked the 17th year since the terrorist attacks in Manhattan, San Francisco, Pennsylvania, and the tenting onto Washington, DC. Many people lost their lives, and we should always remember them and their families. So let's have a moment of silence. Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, would you please read into the record the Open Public Meetings Act Statement?
Adequate notice of this meeting was given to the press and posted as required. Date and time of this meeting was legally given as required by the Open Public Meetings Act. This notice is on file with the municipal clerk and posted on the bulletin board. Minutes of this meeting will be made available to the public upon the completion of typing and proofreading by the municipal clerk.
Thank you very much. Just going down the agenda, one thing I want to point out, people hear me say this every meeting, there's some new people here today, we have a community service project, we collect food for the Office of Concerned Food Pantry at St. Cecilio's Church in Englewood, New Jersey, right down the hill. There's a lot of people in Burton County that could use assistance, and we try to gather food up in the foyer there, and then they pick it up in the morning and distribute it to people who need cereal and other non-perishable food items. So I encourage everyone to bring, if you forgot it tonight, it's still available till tomorrow morning, you can just drop it off at the police station here. And I thank everyone who has contributed. The Office of Concerned calls me every month and thanks me profusely that we're such a big part of their need, and it's something good for us to do because we are all very fortunate here in Englewood Cliffs. So now, without further ado, and-
Mayor, we're waiting for one more player who's running five minutes late, so if the team, two minutes late, okay.
Okay, well, we could certainly just recess for a few minutes, or actually, you know, we could do a couple other things on the agenda, how's that? Just let me know when that player gets here, although I'm sure it'll be obvious. So let's do correspondence. No correspondence for the period here, so that's one more item on our agenda. All right. Well, that's because we're not used to getting all these great banners up here, so now that I know you guys are always going to be champions, we'll keep some special cacks up there to be able to do this. Okay, so the, actually, I like having the trophy here, it's the biggest trophy I think I've ever seen here in a long time. Why don't we just recess for a minute? We're in recess, everybody keeps too- Okay, so again, welcome to the 10U Little League team from Englewood Cliffs. You are a championship team, which is great, and I thank you for doing that. I think you guys did great. I thank your, I thank your coaches and your parents, and I saw your coaches in action. They live for you guys, and it's amazing, the intensity and the strategy and your athleticism. I got to watch, who's the catcher? Raise your hand. One of you had a monster block at home plate in the game I went to see. It was a great block and stopped a run from scoring, so I'm so happy to see the children participating, the parents right along their side, and the coaches there, and I know it takes a lot of time, and it's greatly appreciated, so we want to present-
I would like to read some of the achievements first, then we'll call them.
Right, and so I'm going to introduce Councilwoman McMorro. She's the Chairperson of the Recreation Division here, and without further ado, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, thank you. I'm so excited to see all of you again, so proud of all of you. This is a great achievement, not just for yourselves, but for Englewood Cliffs, and we thank you for making Englewood Cliffs, putting us back on the map. And I'm looking at Tom only because I'm going to read the achievements, and I'm looking at his son, John. I remember when Tom, and I tell the story over and over, but I remember when Tom was up at the field practicing with his nephew, Rob, and it seems like it was yesterday, Rob Kaminsky, who is playing pro baseball now, that was back in 2006?
2007.
2007, okay. And the same passion that he has now, he had, where's Joanna? He had with his nephew, right? You were single at the time, you weren't married, right? And I used to see him practice day in and day out with his nephew, and I'm like, that is just so incredible, and to see him now here, full circle, with his son and his family, and to do this again, it's incredible. It's just, thank you so much, Tom, you are one of the best. So Albert Kim, there are three managers, coaches, Mayor, manager Tom Palowicz, coach Albert Kim, and coach Leon Rosenfeld, if we can have a round of applause. And what they did for the Mayor and Council is they put together the highlights of their summer accomplishments, and this is how their summer went. So, they finished third out of 338 towns in New Jersey that participated in the 10U Tournament. They're the first-ever Section Two champion from Englewood Cliffs, and only the fourth ever from District Six in its 62 years. That's some accomplishment. Only third town to be section champion, including 12U Palisades Park and 10U Teaneck Southern. Incredible. First-ever Englewood Cliffs win in the state final tournament, first, okay? Fifth District Six champion from Englewood Cliffs, 10U in 2005, 10U in 2006, 12U in 2008, 10U in 2017, and 10U in 2018. These are incredible accomplishments, by the way. Final record of 11 wins and four losses. They lost the first game in each of the districts, sectionals, and states, which means they had their backs up against the wall in nine win-or-go-home elimination games. Their record was eight to one in those nine games. Total run differential, 155 runs scored versus 75 runs allowed, and then 153 scored versus 57 allowed, excluding the final Lindcroft game. Districts 75 scored versus 20 allowed, sectionals 66 scored versus 25 allowed, states 12 scored versus 12 allowed, excluding final game. Forty-nine days from first official practice on June 12th to their final game on July 30th. In those 49 days, the team had only seven days off from baseball, that's it. Okay? For example, no practice or game. They had a stretch of 42 days with only three days off in between. That is the definition of commitment and dedication, and that's a big reason why these kids continue to improve and put this run together, which really started last fall. Thousands of batting practice pitches, fly balls, ground balls, drills, and dollars spent at the batting cages. That's just some of their achievements, I just want to have another round of applause. One of the things that I noticed and saw with this group, they just love to play, and they love to be together, and they just love to be doing baseball. It's just such a wonderful sight to see them having such a good time, and even after, there were the days where they lost, as soon as they lost, boom, they were right back on the field playing again, smiles on their faces. It's such an achievement, compliments to their parents, families, everything. We have spoken, and I know that the Council will be in support of this, I'm saying that knowing that everyone just can't say no to Little League and baseball. I spoke to the coaches, I want to do something special for all of these achievements, including the teams before them that had those wins in five, six, the years I read, we want to put together some sort of a tribute, statue, whatever, something at Witty Field, so that no one ever forgets these achievements, we're here now, we're all applauding, but I want the kids after them also to see, this is possible, this can happen with dedication and commitment and working hard, it can happen. The kids after them need to strive to do what these children did and achieved, and the only way you're going to do that is if you have something there that people can walk up to and say, hey, you know, I want to do that, I want to achieve that, and they have to remember, so, you know, we're going to do it without costing taxpayer dollars, we will raise the money somehow, but I just want to ask my colleagues if they will be supportive of that and that process.
Definitely.
Okay, thank you. So with no further ado, we can all step down, and we'll call up the team members and the coaches, congratulate all of them.
Okay.
I'm going to call the coaches up, but the man goes first. We can have a round of applause right there. Now, we're just going to get more, okay, guys? Number six, centerfield pitcher, Austin Kim. Number twenty-seven, shortstop pitcher, Josh Powell. Number eleven, first base pitcher, Jake Rovitz. Number twelve, catcher, Peter Dunn. Number one, second base pitcher, Charles Kim. Number thirteen, first base catcher, Luke Satchel. Number two, third base, second base, Michael Kang. Number ten, left field, second base, Michael Satchel. Number thirty-three, left field, right field, East Bay Seven. Number two, left field, right field, Henry Phillips. Number twenty-five, right field, pitcher, Jake Rovitz. Number twenty-four, right field, third base, Michael Rovitz. The coaches come forward, and that, come forward all three of you, just, you know, nobody can tell a story better than the three of you, so if you come forward and just-
Appreciate what the Mayor Council is doing for us and for the kids, I think it was well deserved. You know, we have a lot of people, it starts with, actually starts with our Little League Board, run by and present by Raffi Chapter, Raffi here?
No.
Raffi Chapter. And Carol, you summed up everything, I guess you got that, paid for, Albert, who kind of did all that, but there are some pretty amazing accomplishments, you know, I mean, really. The amount of practice these guys put in, the love of the game, like you said, when they lose, they don't care, they just come back and, you know, they're children, they knew they were going to come back and do something, the backs against the wall a lot. The dedication, we had practice until our fourth weekend, it was 100 degrees and 107 humidity, and every single kid showed up. You know, it's just the level of commitment that these kids show is just amazing, it really is amazing. And add on to what Carol said, so 338 towns participate in this, and they're also finished third. I think we have 5,400 people in our town, is that close? So we did a little research. Elizabeth Almora has 130,000 people, right? The 30, what was that? 30, South Hackenside, 45,000 people, Teaneck, 41,000 people, I believe 38,000 people, Livingston, 30,000 people, Millville, 29,000 people, so it's like 4,000, 25,000, and a list of the lineup. Like, we're a small town of 5,400 people, and, you know, I think the coaches get some props for this, but really, this is all about the kids. I mean, we're not going to criticize these guys, they're not a big group, right? But they play with such heart and such passion, and they grind out everything. Every single game, someone steps up to the plate, there's a really a team effort, CJ Senator, like Carol said, the first game, we lose against Teaneck, right? We come back, we have to win three games in a row, the kids win three games in a row. The sectionals come, we lose the first game to Almora, our emphasis would beat us last year, they versed us last year, so what happens, we have to win three games in a row. We beat Woodbridge 14 to 1, we come back, play Almora, beat them 13 to 2, right? Now, eliminate them, that was our emphasis, now we have to beat Livingston, who beat us last year in the sections. So we beat them 19 to nothing, and then it's the game of the century, like, you know, whoever came to that game saw a game like, it should be on ESPN. So we thought we were going to have a cake war, and it was beating someone 19 to nothing, and then all of a sudden, we were like, all right, this game is, you know, it's in the hand. Well, the game wound it up to being 13 to 12, we won, but we were losing 75 the last game?
97.
No, 97. 97 the last thing, it all lasted bad. Right? We scored, everyone in the line, we scored six runs, right, to take a 13 to 9 lead. Now they had to get up, they were a home team. And they scored four runs, right, to make it 13 to 12, with bases loaded, right? Austin Kim, I think, was on the mound. We put CJ Senator in right field, they had the bases loaded, one of their batter hitters up. Yeah? So a kid hit a streaming line drive, a kid hit a streaming line drive on Livingston. Home Senator, CJ's dad, he was in right field, crapping in his pants. CJ Senator, who took probably 500 fly balls and all, all the other kids, settles underneath the line, it was an easy play, a line drive, catches it, falls down, and everyone bumped Rush, we bumped Rush and died on top of him. It was the most amazing play, and it really was a, it's a- So I started Leon and Albert, and when it was announced that we were hosting this, I started thinking, you know what, we really have a chance, you know, maybe to be a part of this, it'd be really cool if we had a chance. We started in the winter time with practices, now, forget about the amount of practice we practiced leading up to this, but the winter time is where it started, and every one of these kids wanted, every single, there wasn't a kid that missed a practice. And lo and behold, we made it to the state final, which was amazing, I mean, think about the history of the town, right? We have a professional baseball player, my nephew, you know, they didn't win a sectional title there. We have these guys right here, they have something like Carol said, maybe look up to, maybe I can be a, you know, college baseball player, high school baseball player, or who knows, a pro baseball player, it allows these kids to dream, right? Someone in this town did, we just accomplished this, it's a great accomplishment. I just want to thank the coaches, Leon and Albert, I want to thank all the parents for putting up the stuff in all the practices. I want to thank, very, very, very much for that, we really wanted to teach the coaches what we're supposed to do, and the whole of the coach. I want to thank all the council people who came, I know the mayor came to a game, I know Bill came to a game, and I know Ed came to a game, it's really special, but what's amazing is Carol McMorro, she came to, I think, seven or eight games, which is pretty cool, because all the kids are, hey, I'm ready to get to Almora, you know, there's another kid, Carol and Carol's here, it shows that you guys care about what we do, right? I mean, I know it's only baseball, but we love baseball, we enjoy it, the kids enjoy it, we're getting better, you know, we had a blast, I think these kids will remember this for the rest of their lives. You know, there's a spirit about what we do and how the parents sit around the practices, when we win a game, Christine Senator dresses up as a hawk, which I love the spirit, I love that spirit, Christine serves, so that's awesome. There's just a good bond, it's a good feeling for a 5,400 person town, what we accomplished, these kids accomplished, to me, it's what it does, it brings a smile to my heart, it's a superpower, and we all fight to be very supportive.
Yeah, why don't you ask them back?
And we have to see every pick, okay, so, everybody, we see, I mean, the players. Can you see everybody, all the players?
We'll see you guys here next year.
Now they'll stay up. Now they're going to stay up. Now they're not going to fall, watch.
Yeah, isn't that cute? They set the, they set the rendering of something they want to build up here, so we should get that back.
The bronze statue.
There's a couple different things, you want to maybe do it with some metal and some, we're thinking of-
Have that allowed?
We don't want to, we don't want to-
Space.
Yeah.
Put a billboard and steam-
I'm going to have to-
I'm going to raise my hand.
Here.
Oh, thank you.
Okay, we're back in session, everyone. Okay, we're back in session. So, a couple of updates for you, Officer Oost's litigation complaint has been dismissed. Again, the other thing I wanted to update everybody on was the status of the recordings that were made by our police chief. As many of you know, Chief Chaffee started recording his interactions with me the day after I became mayor in 2016. Of course, he did not tell me that he was recording. I was not made aware of those recordings until Chief Chaffee sued the borough and others, including me, because he felt his civil rights were being violated. How ironic, then that he would record himself violating our rights while enjoying his paid position here as police chief. His rights were never violated, I assure you. I challenged him unquestionable things that he was doing and the department was doing, and those things that were brought to my attention. In the course of his own litigation, Chief Chaffee produced those documents that we requested information, and to our astonishing surprise, recordings, over 120 of them, and we believe there's more, and we're trying to get them. The status right now is that he's refusing to turn over his borough-issued recording device, we own it, the borough owns it, for inspection, and he's refusing to do that. The court gave the parties until September 12th to come up with an agreement on the matter. No surprise, there was no agreement, so the court has scheduled a conference for October 1st to address the issue. So there's basically two people in the world who could release those tapes right now, Chief Chaffee and a judge. Think about that. Chief Chaffee also refused to comply with direct orders to turn over the recorder to the borough. Again, the borough owns it, and it should be in the borough's possession. His refusal is now the subject of a criminal complaint that the borough has filed against him for theft of borough property. Rules and laws apply to everyone. So he tried to use the recordings as a sword and as a shield, so the first thing we did after producing them was try to have them kept confidential. His own lawyer acknowledged that the recording- I hear it all the time from them, because that's how corruption can continue. Just about 3% of our population doesn't want those recordings released. The other 97%, I assure you, do want them released. I have disagreed and even conducted a straw poll. Everyone here last month got to vote by a show of hands, and there's a video of that. I encourage you to see it. About 90% of the people here wanted them released. Those opposed include the usual Chief Chaffee apologists, Ed, Gloria, Ellen, Karen Geiger, Debbie Savory, Melanie Simon, Mike Maronucci, of course, also. It becomes comical. Mr. D. Gregorio, you're gonna have to leave if you do that again. In order to gauge the public's desire to know what those recordings contained, I then encouraged our citizens to let me know if they support the release of the recordings. Okay, for people at home, the noise you heard just now of Mr. D. Gregorio, you're wanting very loudly, because he has better things to be doing, right? So, it's very childish, but it's not surprising. So, we want the recordings released, except for confidential information or attorney-client privilege information, or things that are sensitive for employees in the borough, because Chief Chaffee did not discriminate. He recorded everybody, but in his words, he did discriminate. The overwhelming response from our citizens is that they want the recordings released. And they should be. This should be made public, so that everyone can hear the unlawful, sexist, hurtful, defamatory, discriminatory, xenophobic, and blatantly, blatantly anti-Asian sentiments spoken by one of the highest-paid police department chiefs in New Jersey. I am here to protect our rights, the citizens' rights, and to not look the other way, as a few of you suggested. Ellen, as you know, the political machine that I replaced after 42 years of one party, one family rule, has a history of targeting people, including me. I hope you get to listen to those tapes. So, what's interesting is that Karen Geiger of I Under Chris and Lynn Orton, the nonpartisan newsletter that you get in your mailbox and probably throw out, are well-known supporters of the political machine and Chaffee, even though they laughingly claim they are nonpartisan. They both filed Open Public Records Act requests, asking me for all communications that I received from our citizens in response to my question of whether they support release of the tapes. I sincerely believe that, as friends of Chief Chaffee, they are trying to gather this information in order to target our citizens through doxing, and to create a chilling effect on our citizens' participation in democracy. I did not turn over any of our citizens' emails, and I will not. I will protect our citizens from the targeting by these people. What's interesting, I read in the newspaper yesterday that the new attorney, New Jersey Attorney General, Bill Graywell, who had been the Bergen County prosecutor, he became prosecutor the same month I became mayor, and we met at a breakfast, and we kind of laughed about how we inherited a lot of problems. And I just think that he didn't appreciate the problems he inherited, nor did I, but we're working through it. I think, he tries, he's trying to do a good job, and he started an anti-corruption, a government anti-corruption division of the Attorney General's office, and I know he reads about us, because I read about him, and he's from Bergen County, so I encourage him to come to Anglicus and have a sit-down with me, and we could go back over the last two years, two and a half years of our lives, and kind of explain to him where we're at. That's all I have to say on this matter right now, but there's gonna be more next month, I assure you. And what I want to do now is, of course, open to the public. Do you have a motion to open to the public? One favor?
Hi.
Okay. If there's anyone from the public who wishes to be heard, please raise your hand. Let me recognize you, state your name, and then come up here and tell me what's on your mind.
Good evening, everybody. Dave D. Gregorio, 165 Charlotte Place, I'm from I Under Chris, New Jersey. I'm full of facts this evening. Fact: taking pretty easy sign-down. How much did that cost the borough? A few hundred dollars, maybe? And that was under the order of Mayor Crancheck. Removing and reinstalling Mr. Parker's memorial, and then moving it again, I guess, right? It was several hundred dollars, correct? That's small potatoes. Hiring added personnel to the municipal government. That's probably a couple hundred thousand dollars. So, conservative, Republican, Mayor Crancheck is not. He's spending our money like water. Lawsuits against chief. He could've reached out, he could've been very nice, he could've worked with the chief. Costing us probably upwards of millions of dollars in lawsuits. Taxes are going up. Nine, 10, 11%. Rajes on the part of Mayor Crancheck. The Republican who's supposed to be conservative, not so conservative. 800 Sylvan Avenue. He appointed someone through the planning commission. That person had probably not too much experience, because that person made a wonderful decision to give Normandy such a hard time. How much is that gonna cost us as a town, a municipality? All these fights. Oh, police chief I mentioned, was it? And there's probably a lot more that I forgot. So, Mayor Crancheck, facts, 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 no feelings, facts, I'm telling you. And I'm telling all the residents, facts. Everything could've been avoided. Has there been anything to raise the quality of life for our residents in town? It's impossible. It's impossible when you're in vendetta stage, or vendetta mindset, to be creative. Mayor Crancheck has not been creative. He has not increased the quality of life for anybody in this town. And you have Billy Wu, and you have Park, Mark Park, and they're following, they need to be mavericks and say enough. A lot of it was caused by Carol McMurro and her past history in the town. Stand up, even if you're Republicans, stand up against things that are going to be negative. We've had so much negativity in this room, enough to cause World War III. Has it done, has it wasted money? Yes. Has it been prudent? No. Has it been leadership? Huh, it's a joke, leadership. This has not been leadership. It's been vengeance? Listen to the diatribe that he went through in the beginning. And next month, he's gonna do the same thing. Let's give a speech instead, Mario, about what you've done, positive in this town. You've done nothing right. Nothing. Nothing at all, except maybe pave the street. We could do things in, innovative things all over. Let's convene an innovative committee, a vision committee. No vision, nothing. This town could rock, you failed us. Big time. Your contempt for people in this town, and lack of respect for people that have participated and written and informed, has been absolutely disgusting, and it has bordered on insanity. Thank you very much. I would hope that you would prove me wrong. I voted for you, it's the biggest disappointment in the world. I thought you would reach across the aisle and do some positive things. So far, zilch. Except, congratulations to a very positive, winning baseball team. Congratulations to all those boys. I wish it was nonpolitical, and I wish every politician would leave them to their win without interfering with pictures and speeches. Thank you very much.
So, Mr. D. Gregorio, I sat here and I kept waiting for, no, don't come back. You're not allowed back.
Talk to me.
No, 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 you still have to sit down.
Are you going to be addressing me?
You have to sit down. You have to sit down.
I have, but you said.
Your time is up. Your time is up.
Okay, so I'm not gonna change?
There are rules, and we follow rules.
I will stand back here and wait for your.
Then you go sit down.
Talk after we close.
You can't stand there, I have to call somebody else. Have a seat, please.
Are you going to comment about my comments?
No.
No? Okay, then I will sit down, but no comments?
I could do whatever I want.
No comments?
I could do whatever I want, and I will.
It's a deep recording.
All right. I sat here and I was waiting for his facts, but they never did come out. The quality of life, if you ask the 10 U Little League team, I think their quality of life was very good. We had a nice celebration. It was not political, it's a celebration, okay? That's what it was, okay? And everyone else is free to celebrate with them. It's a shame, because I did see people in the back there who weren't even clapping, because they're just here for other purposes. Now, in terms of innovation that Mr. D. Gregorio raises, when I became mayor, I actually reached out to him, and I asked him for his ideas. And the only idea he came up with was that we should replace all our asphalt streets with cobblestones.
Not true.
Okay. Next.
Not true. I have a million different ideas.
Next. Yes. My email works, it's fine, send me your ideas, feel free to send them to me.
I have in the past, look at your history.
Logical ideas. Things that are workable, David.
Debbie Fair, 49 Irving Avenue, Anglicus. My first question is about the ordinance. Why are you looking to adopt an ordinance establishing mandatory inclusion of affordable housing?
You could state your questions, but we're not answering those.
Okay, now, this ordinance is going to the planning board tomorrow night.
We're in litigation.
Well, it's going to the planning board.
And Beatty Patavano's attorney, who is still in us, is sitting right there.
She's attorney and announced that it's going to the planning board tomorrow night.
We're not discussing it here. You could say whatever you want.
I'm asking you to discuss.
You're asking for answers, we're not giving you.
Well, I asked the question, you have the right not to answer.
All right, we're not answering, move on.
I'm talking about procedure. It's going to the planning board, correct? You'll get a recommendation from the planning board, you accept on Friday, and then in order for it to be advertised in a timely manner, you know, it has a hearing on the 26th, it's calling it pretty close. And depending on the type of ordinance, I'm wondering if that has anything to do with any zoning changes, whether it continues towns you have to be known about? So, I'm just asking procedural question, that if the timeline, if you bring it out to this ordinance, it's feasible.
It's fair.
We're not answering.
Right.
Go ahead. If you have anything else, you're welcome to address us.
Okay, but. Not litigation, talk about procedure and adopting the.
We're being very polite, please.
Yes, so am I. Anyway, will a copy of the ordinance be available tomorrow? When it goes to be.
What are the clerk's rules are?
So, will we be able to get a copy of the ordinance tomorrow? After it's introduced to them?
Whatever the rules.
Amory?
It's up to you.
Normally, you publish it in the paper.
Correct, and I will, I would provide it. When you publish.
So, we can have a copy tomorrow?
Yes, you can email me.
Very good. The bill list, you know, is excessively high, is that a school payment?
Six million. I would have to defer to the administration.
Is there a school payment on there?
There may have, I believe there was one.
Recorder.
I believe there was. I think it was, yeah, right.
Now, I see on the agenda Resolution 181, a major murder side, and the resolution is on the agenda, because there was an error in the resolution that was put on the agenda in August, and this resolution is correct. So, of course, my question is, where is the Chaffee resolution that was incorrect, should be corrected, at an open public meeting, not behind the scenes by the attorney, changing something that wasn't properly voted on? And when is that resolution going to come back and state to the public the true outcome of that penalty? When are you going to do that? You said you made an error, you admitted you made an error, you admitted that the resolution was wrong, you haven't brought it back to any meeting to be re-voted on correctly. Why not? No answer.
No answer.
So, you can bring other resolutions that were done incorrectly, which is fine, things happen, you know, happen, there are errors, as long as you correct them. But when you have to correct them at an open public meeting? You don't get to change resolutions behind the scenes and not bring it to an open public council meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Lastly, any communication with borough officials? There's a disclaimer that any resident that writes to a borough official in their capacity officially with the mayor, the clerk, can be open.
Thank you.
And therefore, and to make the assumption that somebody wants to be made such partisan is absolutely ludicrous.
History predicts the future.
That's how your minds work.
History predicts the future.
That's not how any of our minds work.
No, of course not, thank you.
No, it really isn't.
Of course not.
We actually care about the town.
I know you do.
And.
I know.
Did things that were good for the town.
That's right.
And as Mr. LeWern said, you have not done anything positive for the town.
That's your view. Anybody else wishing to be heard? Me, pal, Andrew, is that you raising your hand? No? Okay. I'm sorry, I thought you raised your hand. Yes.
Lauren Eastwood, Orwell Drive. First of all, I certainly don't agree with the Democrats about how wonderful things were under them and how good things were. I got involved because we had serious problems with the building department, where rules applied to some people and didn't apply to others, including my next-door neighbors. And it caused a lot of damage on my property, and it was brought to the mayor and council's attention, including Councilwoman Ariza and Councilwoman O, and they did absolutely nothing about it. In the few years since the Republicans have taken over, I've seen new programs like Community Night Out and the 5K. I've also seen a substantial decrease.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Mr. D. Gregorio, you're being disruptive, as are you, Ms. Simon and Ms. Yaskos. I ask you.
I didn't say anything, how dare you!
No, you did, I saw you.
I did not!
Okay, fine, if you didn't say anything.
I'm gonna suggest you back off.
Okay, we'll take your suggestion, but I did hear noise from you.
There's a lot of noise.
I did, actually.
It's a hearing check!
No, I could hear you pretty well.
Because I'm raising my voice, because I don't think you hear me.
Okay. That wasn't a.
I have appreciated that my property taxes over the last three years since Republicans took control have gone up on average 2.8% a year versus 5.3% a year in the preceding four years when the Democrats were in control. And I have appreciated the responsiveness of the administration to complaints, which was nonexistent under the previous administration.
It depended who you were.
Well, that's true.
All right.
I find it disturbing that Ms. Fair comes up here every meeting to lecture you on procedures. There's a procedure on spending money in a borough. It involves an open public meeting. She got a $10,000 raise in a closed session.
How much?
$10,000, which also affected her pension and cost us money there, too. And so far as I know, that was never corrected in a public session. So, I think she should stop lecturing us on procedures. And I think she should also stop interrupting me. As to people, fear concern about people being intimidated, and that's why people want lifts, I think that's a very real possibility, having been subject to malicious, false criminal charges from someone sitting up there because they didn't like what I said. So, I think that's a very real risk, and I think it's a risk that our residents have to be aware of.
Who's that?
Councilwoman Ellen Park.
I'm sorry, what was her statement? I just wanted to make sure we have it on camera. What was her exact words again? Did I say something false?
it occurred regularly under the prior administration. People have a right to speak their minds without fear of retaliation. As to Mr. De Gregorio's concern that the mayor is going to comment after the meeting is closed, that happens all the time from the councilor. Joe Parisi did it all the time. He'd wait until closed session, and then he'd respond, and it wouldn't give the resident opportunity to respond. I mean, it happens. And I'm sure Ms. Park is going to do the same thing later on tonight.
I'm sorry, I just have a question for you.
However, the decision is, and transcript exists.
Okay, so we should send it out to everyone, first of all. And second of all, you're the one who's been harassing me. You're the one who actually pulled all of my records, sent letters to people in town, which, I'm sorry, did you say you did not do that?
Ms. Ellen Park, you're doing amazing work here.
I'm sorry. I'm not raising my voice. Did you or did you not send letters to people in town?
Sorry?
It's not a...
I'm trying to...
For this citizen...
She accused me of certain things. I want to put it on the record.
I got this. I got this.
Did you or did you not send letters to people in town regarding my home?
Hold, 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 hold. Wait. You can't go after people like that. They're citizens.
What are you talking about? You accused me of something that I did not do.
Okay, this is not a dialogue for you.
Wait, she did. Yeah, you can respond. Yes or no, Lauren? Did you or did you not?
You're interrupting a citizen.
You are one of the nastiest, most malicious people I have ever met in my life, and I don't intend to respond to you.
Why? What is the answer? Yes or no?
And I still want to answer how you got a building permit to experience non-conforming coverage without a variance.
So why won't you answer whether or not...
You're out of order.
You know what? I'll get my chance later.
You don't have the floor.
Yes, I will get my chance later.
Our citizen has the floor. One of our citizens...
You mean the former councilwoman Lauren Eastwood, who's also the Shade Tree Committee Chair? She's also on multiple different departments that you have assigned her. You've appointed her in, and now you're telling me she's just a resident?
Yeah, and actually, she gets the meetings on time. It will happen hour late today.
Great.
Go ahead.
Can we rewind?
No, you don't get to talk from there. You don't get to talk from there.
It's really ironic that you don't answer that question, whether you sent letters...
Go ahead. You're out of order. You're out of order.
The captain says that they're out of order.
You're out of order.
I want an investigation, Emery. I'm saying it right now.
This is not...
You have said that last time.
What is your theory?
...intimidate people.
Okay, but you have said that. Did you not?
Please.
Okay, so I want, I'm requesting an investigation of Lauren Eastwood, putting it on the record.
There is no...
Make a motion later.
I will.
...investigate citizens for exercising their constitutional rights.
Sure. That's your right to send letters to people in town. Is that what you're saying?
And I really feel that you are putting the borough in danger of a civil rights action.
Okay.
Is that incident something where there's also persons...
Well, let's see.
Ellen, please, stop. Just stop.
Ms. Eastwood, if I could ask you, please don't address Ms. Park. And Ms. Park, Councilwoman Park, please do not do what you're doing to this person or anyone else. It's not appropriate.
But I...
Please, excuse me. We can hear you, Ms. Fair. Ms. Skolik, it's not fair for what you're hearing behind you coming. I'm sitting here. I'm trying to. I am being mature, but...
Okay, Ms. Eastwood, Ms. Skolik, please. Please, go ahead.
It's unfortunate that those of us who disagree with the Democrats can't address the mayor and council without being mature. But that seems to be the way it has been forever. You know, we've, I'm sure they're not happy. Personally, I think there needs to be a lot of investigations. They should start with the prior building sector and find out how my next-door neighbor got an assortment of building permits on a non-conforming lot without variances, and how other things were done. I am happy that things seem to be running so the rules apply to everyone now, which didn't happen in the past. And it's unfortunate that some people are unhappy. I suspect that they were people who might have been benefiting from the old system.
Anybody else wishing to be heard? Please raise your hand.
My name is Andrew Steiger. I live on 750 Flood Street. And what I want to say is, I'm going to be very brief. The two most important issues facing the residents of Englewood Cliffs, whether they happen to be Democrats, Republicans, or independents, one of them is the rising real estate taxes. This is caused, of course, by an increase in personnel, because now we have a recreation director, we have a business administrator, maybe we're going to have a public safety director, and all these salaries add up. And then the cost of litigation by residents against the borough, and the cost of insurance that is needed to cover the personnel from the borough. And the, so, one of the problems is that we used to be able to deduct the real estate tax and our New Jersey state tax, but now there's a limitation of $10,000 that will be this year. And so, a lot of the, those taxes that we're paying, we're not going to be able to recover on the federal return. And it's going to cost everybody in this town money, whether they're Republican, Democrat, or independent. Then the second, I think, important issue is the Norman De Associates who's trying to put up a five-story residential tower that they want to build on 800 Sylvan Avenue with 600 units. What will this do? We'll need to build new schools, of course. We'll need a new sewer system, because it'll at least have to be upgraded to take care of the capacity, because you're talking about, if you're talking about 600 residential units and two to three people in a residential unit, you're talking about another 1,800 people in the town. And as of the last census, Englewood Cliffs was, the census was 5,281. So this, these are really the problems. I think that the attack on Chief Cioppi is a diversion. It's not a real issue. It's designed to take, to make it an issue so that the real important issues will not be noticed. Chief Cioppi will retire at the end of January. He's going to be gone, and the mayor will be able to appoint another chief, and that will be very soon. So I don't see why we should be spending money for litigation against Chief Cioppi when he's going to be retired very soon, at the end of January. Thank you for your attention.
Dr. Steiger, I left a white plain piece of paper there. If you want, you could make a list of all the laws that you don't want to have applied to certain people, and then we'll look at that list. Because we have to apply all the laws equally, sir. We have to apply all laws equally.
Yes.
So if you want to make a list of laws that you don't want applied to certain people, go ahead. Give me the list, and we'll look at it. But what you're asking me to do is look the other way. And I took an oath of office that does not let me do that, okay? That's why we're here, and it's a real issue. And I hope you get to listen to those tapes and recordings, and then you could tell me how unreal that issue is or how real it is.
Well, I'm not sure that the citizens of Englewood Cliffs will ever be able to listen to these recordings. I know you listened to the recording. I know that Carol McMarlowe listened to the recording, but I'm not sure that we'll ever be able to.
I'm pretty sure you will be. I'm very confident.
That's going to be determined.
As a matter of public, as a matter of public policy, a court will permit this, no matter how many obstacles Chief Cioppi puts... I just have to apply laws equally, sir. I can't pick and choose, okay?
I don't think he said...
Thank you.
I don't think Dr. Steiger said...
Anybody else wishing to be heard?
Hello, everybody. Charlie Parker, 99th Street. Okay, so, I sat here to, I think it was the last meeting I was in before, and the reality that the stone was going to be...
I can't hear you.
I'm so sorry. That the stone was going to be reinstated. Okay, so it was reinstated. I was happy. Everybody was happy. Everybody congratulated me, whatever. Then, a few days ago, somebody said, "Did you know that the stone was moved? Did you know that?"
I didn't know that.
Did you know that? Did you know that? Did everybody else here know that?
Actually, I did not know, but I saw...
Oh, then I guess Mario Kradzak knows, because you ordered it, didn't you, Mayor?
I did, in fact, and it was a better location to honor your husband.
What do you mean, a better location?
Well, let me finish. You're asking...
Excuse me. I just want to tell you something positive, though. I was at the, I had no idea it was moved, but I, we had signed up for soccer on Saturday, and all the children were playing. And that's when, the first time I saw, I said, "What are they all looking at over there?" And they were all going over there with playgrounds right there. I didn't know it was moved. And I said, "Wow, look at that. That's a better location over there." All the kids were looking at it.
Carol, that's your opinion.
Let me finish.
And I thank you very much for your opinion.
But the kids were all...
You're entitled to it.
Just saying. However...
Do you want an answer? You asked me a question. You asked me a question.
No, but I have...
You don't want an answer? You don't want an answer?
Yes, I do want to answer.
Close. Decide what you want.
Because I want to say my things, my nasty.
Okay.
The stone, again, was moved without any notification. I could not believe it when someone told me...
You want notification? You think I have to give you notice? You didn't give me notice when you put it there in the first place. We found a very nice location for that stone. It's in front of Mark Neville and I did. It's right in front of the children's...
It was decided at that time before you were mayor, okay?
No, it wasn't.
Yes, it was.
No, it wasn't.
Yes, it was. And it was, excuse me, the tree shade commission told me that this was the perfect spot. I went there with them.
It's out of the jurisdiction.
I got...
It's the Shade Tree Commission, not a Shade Rock.
I was sure it was their jurisdiction. I don't know.
All right, well...
Excuse, I don't know, man.
You're just not happy, but let me explain to you. First of all, where it was placed originally...
I want to know why nobody else knew that it was going to be...
Because I'm the mayor. They're not. Let me finish answering. The reason why it was moved was because it was very crowded where it was in the first place. It's under a snack bar, and it was really just getting lost underneath a tree. We moved it in front of a park because, true to what you said, your husband, your husband cared very much about the children, was on the scoreboard to put it outside of the children's park. And it's also serving as a physical barrier to that park, where a car cannot crash into it, all right? That's why. Two reasons. It's in a better location. If you don't like it, then I'm sorry, but it's actually a better honor for your husband to be there. Okay?
And I'm supposed to accept that, you know? I'm supposed to accept the fact that someone said, "Did you know that the stone was moved?" Yes, I absolutely not.
But what, did you go see it? Did you go see it?
Well, after I was told.
Well, go see it. It's actually a great location. Everyone passes it who's going to the children's park.
So I didn't see it. And I don't have to agree with you.
That's fine.
I liked the way it was before.
What, as you reference your self-righteousness, I understand it. However, I really look forward to the day when you get to listen to the Cioppi tapes, because you feature prominently in one of them. Thank you.
Is that why you had it be moved?
No.
Don't put that word in there.
It's in a better lo...
Actually, now I get it.
It's in a better location.
That's why. That is a stretch, sir. That is a list.
You ask your own question.
Doesn't have the decency to check with somebody before he moves something?
And nobody here knows about it?
I'm asking you to be...
Carol McMarlowe doesn't know about it.
I did not know.
Which is ugly, very ugly.
You don't get to do that.
Oh, I can do whatever I want, and I can leave whatever I want.
Mrs. Walker...
No, you'll be leaving.
All the children were looking at it on Saturday. That's how I noticed it.
Officer, this gentleman needs to be removed.
I really think it's in a nice place.
Gentlemen...
Respectfully.
The gentleman there is just screaming out of his seat, and he's on his way out.
He's not kicking me out, I'm afraid.
But he didn't, he did not kick you out.
He's really a tasteless human being, aren't you? Tasteless, tasteless. You're indecent.
Officer, officer, make sure he doesn't come back. Thank you. Anybody else wishing to be heard?
Well, I just wanted to finish this. I feel, in my opinion, that you are cautious, that you don't care about people. And I'm going to tell you that right now. I've never been accusatory, ever.
Those are your feelings. A lot of people know I care about them.
Well, you know what, sir? You certainly haven't demonstrated one of them to my house. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else wishing to be heard? Yes.
Karen Diger, 270 Alford Street. I have two comments tonight, and I'll retake. One, Ms. Eastwood said that attempts were made, that she, attempts were made under the prior administration to intimidate citizens with fear of retaliation. There are few people in this town who fought the prior administration more than I did. I spent two years coming to mayor and council meetings, fighting with Joe Parisi over the height of LG and other related issues. In all the two years, I have never, ever been intimidated. I have never been spoken to rudely outside of the chambers. I have never felt less of a citizen than I have sitting here for the last three years since you are mayor. You show no respect to anyone who disagrees with you. Whether we have facts or feelings is immaterial. You have no respect for residents. And my other comment is on your decision to withhold from me the information which I am entitled to under the Public Open Records Act. Twice you have been found guilty by a superior court judge, Judge Contio...
That's not true.
...of by, excuse me.
That's not true.
That is true. That is true.
What choice are we?
One of the cases was brought by me, and one of the cases was brought by Ms. Park. And in each of those cases, Judge Contio said that the borough violated the open public records...
I'm gonna try not to address the name-calling that's gone on, that I think is uncalled for, in public forum. It's, it really is disgraceful on all sides to hear the back and forth that goes on. Um, I'm questioning, what is this, what, I'm trying to understand what this appointment is. What does a community development representative do? What number is that?
It's the representative of the Burnham County Economic Development Department, and last year, uh, Ms. Eastwood served as our representative, and I've asked her to do that again this year.
And so is that a unilateral decision?
Yes.
That's just an appointment that traditionally is made solely by you, not by?
The recommendation that we vote on.
So that's gonna be voted on tonight? So I feel, based on what I've heard tonight and in other meetings, I'm not clear that Ms. Eastwood, who may be counted in many areas, is the best to represent our community in this capacity. I think it's too charged, I think there's too much history, and I think there's too much anger to do a, uh, to do justice in any position that should be representing everybody.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to be heard? Yes.
Karen Geiger, 270 Alfred Street. I have two comments tonight, and I'll retell. One, Ms. Eastwood said that attempts were made, that she, attempts were made under the prior administration to intimidate citizens with fear of retaliation. There are few people in this town who fought the prior administration more than I did. I spent two years coming to mayor and council meetings, fighting with Joe Parisi over the height of LG and other related issues. In all the two years, I have never, ever been intimidated. I have never been spoken to rudely outside of the chambers. I have never felt less of a citizen than I have sitting here for the last three years since you are mayor. You show no respect to anyone who disagrees with you. Whether we have facts or feelings is immaterial. You have no respect for residents. And my other comment is on your decision to withhold from me the information which I am entitled to under the Public Open Records Act. Twice you have been found guilty by a superior court judge, Judge Contio.
That's not true.
Of by, excuse me.
That's not true.
That is true. That is true.
What choice are we?
One of the cases was brought by me, and one of the cases was brought by Ms. Park. And in each of those cases, Judge Contio said that the borough violated the Open Public Records Act. The documents were required to be produced, and the borough had to pay our legal fees. I strongly suggest that you reconsider your comment made tonight, because I do not want to revisit the, a lawyer again and go to court.
Why do you need, why do you need those names? Why do you need those names?
It is not your business.
Why do you need them? What are you going to do with them? You're going to target them, aren't you?
I never.
They're rocking this at home. I am not giving your names up.
Excuse me, so you are refusing to do this? You are refusing to reply?
No, but I know you want to target them.
I have never.
You target me if you want. Don't target my citizens, okay?
I asked for a public.
Don't target our citizens.
I asked for.
You could target me all you want. You and the people in the back row there, Mr. Marinucci, Liasco, Simon, Ramon, you could target me all you want.
Excuse me.
But do not target our citizens.
You know that.
Sit down. Mr. Marinucci, you're out of control.
Yeah. You mentioned my name. Call the police again, let me go out.
You're on your way out, sir. You're on your way out. Are you threatening me?
No, I'm not.
Are you threatening me? You're threatening me, Mr. Marinucci. When this man comes to your house, people, remember what he's saying here.
Don't call my name.
Goodbye.
Your name is running out, everybody's name is on this side.
What's wrong? Really, what's gonna go, sir?
You're on the right side, too, while you're at it, ma'am.
Sergeant Wal, he's taking him. Sergeant Wal, he's threatened me. Mr. Marinucci has threatened me.
Yeah.
All right?
Yeah.
We'll talk about it later.
Yeah.
Just tell him to leave. We may, we may do that. I may do that.
Yeah.
I will, perhaps. Tell Mr. Marinucci he's not welcome back here. Thank you, officer. Miss Geiger, what's next?
Yeah. That's the next one to do.
Don't you?
He was threatening you.
He just threatened me.
He didn't threaten you. You're on camera.
You obviously have your own view of the rule of law, and what really is the real rule of law, and what's really happening in the courts with this town is indifferent to you. You persist on this representation, and it really is very, very sad for our community.
Thank you. You're the only person still in this town right now, in, in here, not me, you are, see? Anybody else? Yes. No, she's still in with.
She's not the only person.
She's lined herself up with this file.
That's someone else who's still in the town. For money. For money. Yeah, sitting on, on this side.
And you, then you wanna know why I think you have a conflict and can't vote on me? Keep talking.
Yes, please.
It's all on video.
That's right. Let's bring it to court.
You cannot, you cannot vote on me. That's my opinion.
Maria Valari, 45, Jane Drive. Okay, so I just wanna say a few things. I'm, I'm actually shaking from this meeting. I can't believe what's going on here. What I wanna say is, is that I recall that all.
I'm sorry, Ms. Liascos, I'm looking at you right now, and you're talking, right? Can you just stop, please? Please stop.
Do you think, sir, do you? The amount of disrespect and rudeness is unbelievable to me, what's going on here tonight. Okay. I recall, I came to many, many meetings before Mayor Krajac was voted in. I came to many Parisi meetings, and to say that Mayor Krajac, that they have never witnessed anything like this man? You people should be ashamed of yourselves for even saying that. I remember cases where Mayor Parisi got off that dais and got in the faces of the residents of this town. So when you talk about residents, don't talk, 'cause if you're talking for me or somebody else, you're talking for your group of residents. You're not representing the whole town, okay? Carter Carson, my God, I feel so bad for this woman. I, I don't, I don't know how she puts up with it. Carter Carson? He shut you down in a second, shouted you down, intimidated you, and had you removed from this room, okay? And, and I'm sure there are tapes out there, if anybody's interested.
Yeah, you're right, he's also featured on those tapes.
Okay. Also, I also want you to know that my 10-year-old son, ladies and gentlemen, was sent to juvenile court by Mayor Joseph Parisi for riding a little motorbike up Carroll Drive, okay? My son suffered through that. Nobody knows what he went through and what my family went through because of that. So shame on yourselves for sitting here and singing the praises of the Parisi regime, because you know what? He wasn't working for the whole town, okay? And that's a fact. We're still talking about a rock? Are you serious? With all that's going on? The rock was not removed. Ivan Favaro did not have the authority to have that rock placed there. The grounds are not under shade tree. Do you know what's under shade tree?
Shade tree.
Shade trees.
Brilliant.
That's it. Isn't that interesting? Otherwise, it would've said parks and recreation and whatever they wanted to do. The problem is that we people here, who have lived under the Parisi dynasty, okay, for 30 years, know the facts. The facts are that the people that were in with the Parisis got whatever they wanted, and the people who were not in with the Parisis got nothing and got trouble. I'm going to ask Lizette something. Lizette, we had an incident where a resident complained about a pool. I'm not gonna mention names. That resident wanted to know, who had the pool, wanted to know who it was that complained about her pool. Carter Carson advised me that I could give out that information to that resident. However, when I presented that op-er to you, you sent me a slew of reasons on why I could not give that person that name, because you said that under that, all that jargon that you sent me, that it would cause problems between the neighbors and fights between the neighbors. So how dare do these people, and I hope that you don't release any of the names of the people that support releasing those tapes, because that's exactly what will be created. Thank you.
Yeah, sure.
I don't have any. I don't have any of the names. And I, I don't have any, allow me to finish. I don't have any of the names.
Okay.
Okay, if, if anyone did send a, a name, it went to, um, I see, Mrs.? Are you trying to, are you recording me, Mrs. Oshin?
Yes, I'm recording the whole movie.
Okay. You know what else?
I was being recorded, uh, my, by Ms. Ellen Park, so I don't see what the problem is with recording.
It's okay. But you're right, I'm, you're recording me. I'm recording you.
You were.
Because I didn't, I, because of you recording me.
I don't record, I don't even have an iPhone, I have a phone. Please. Obviously, you're wrong about that, Ms. Park.
Possibly.
Okay, so that is my point as far as releasing names. You will only be creating issues amongst residents of the town. So if, in fact, the side of the aisle wishes to represent all the people, they have to know what all the people want, not just what their people want. Okay, uh, I mean, uh, there's just some, rising real estate taxes, okay? My taxes were raised almost every year while the Parisis were in. So all of a sudden, we're now worried about taxes. Obviously, we're always worried about taxes, but I never heard a word from anybody about the rising taxes back then. You know, I heard personnel, taxes, Normandy, I heard so many things, but you know what I didn't hear? I didn't hear how many lawsuits, how many lawsuits we have that are basically police-related. Okay? Of course, of course I know that. What I am saying is, is that how many lawsuits do we have? Between councilpeople, police officers, uh, it, it, it's, it's mind-boggling, and it's really upsetting as a resident, who I've never sued anybody. I never sued anybody in my life, okay? Even when I had cause to sue, I did not sue. And by the way, Parisi celebrated Little League. What happened? We're not allowed to celebrate Little League anymore because the mayor is a Republican? What, what is that about? Every time we had things in the Parisi times, they've always celebrated the Little Leagues. I, I, I'm just, I've got so much written down, and my brain is, is, is just not going there anymore. We need to really, if you really wanna do something for the town, ladies and gentlemen, you need to do something for the whole town. You need to make decisions that are good for the whole town. I wanna see those tapes released. I wanna hear those tapes personally, because after working in Borough Hall, I can tell you, there's a lot of stuff that's not kosher that went on. And so therefore, I think I have the right to hear. Is my name on there? Were sexual things said about me, or about somebody sitting over there? Or, or somebody is being threatened because maybe they don't like how they behave? You know something? World is not perfect. And so I would like to hear everything that's on those tapes. How many tapes? 120? I wanna hear them all. And I hope that you all agree, you three decided that you didn't want those tapes released. Shame, no, I'm talking.
I am reading.
I am, I'm a resident, and I'm talking. You decided not to have those tapes released.
We can't let the, it's in court.
Thank you. It's not that we decided not to release it, it's in the hands of the courts.
Yes.
And you know that.
You know, if he's facing it, he would. But he can't, it's in court, let's go.
Can you stop harassing the citizens, please?
Sure, when you stop.
Yes.
Oh, Ellen, just so you know. I don't record.
I think I got you mixed up with Mrs. Oshin.
It's my face.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Lynn Liascos, 10th and Ford. I have a few concerns. And my concern center around the release of residents' names. Um, what's it gonna take to get those tapes released?
It's gonna take people like you and everyone else to be loud. Be loud and demand that they be released.
I mean, 'cause I see four Republicans, I'm a Republican. I'm a staunch Trump supporter. I see four Republicans here who could've voted to release those tapes.
No, they, they did.
And I, sir, I, I have a question.
There was no vote, you're making that up.
Hold on, I tell them, I'm sure.
I can tell you to shut.
Ms. Valorian, to you. There was no vote placed on the agenda.
Why not?
For, because we do not have the authority.
Exactly.
This body does not.
Do not yell at me. You're only an employee of the borough.
Not yelling, I'm not.
Lower your voice.
Okay. Excuse me, council members, if I can just say, there is a, there is a federal lawsuit and a federal discovery confidentiality order. This body does not have the ability to defeat that order. That judge needs to change it.
Or, or the chief needs to waive.
I understand that. So right now, you have no ability to do this.
So we, we're waiting for the judge. What, excuse me, what I merely said to you was, there was no vote by the council. The mayor asked the people of the, uh, gallery, gallery here, how would you vote? That's all that happened. There was no official vote by this body.
There's no authority.
So if, if there's no authority yet, we're waiting for the judge. We can't do anything, correct?
All I'm saying.
Yes or no? Yeah, guess, Carol, what the answer is, Jesus.
I'm not, because you're being so rude. You just wanna be.
No, she's the attorney. She's the attorney.
I'm just going to shut up, just hold it, hold it.
She, I didn't tell her to shut up. I did not.
Okay. So I'm not going to apply on the pending litigation. I'm merely stating to you that there is a discovery confidentiality order right now, and this body, at this particular moment in time, doesn't have the ability to vote on that order.
Can you tell me when you think this might be resolved?
Again, I'm not.
By the judge. Forget about Chiazzo, 'cause you're not gonna get an.
Hold on, hold on.
There's a hearing on, hold on, there's a hearing on October 1st.
October 1st, okay.
I'd like to add to this answer. We also have a police officer that wants the tapes. He's going to court to ask the judge.
Can you say his name?
Uh, it's a public matter, Lieutenant Tracy.
Okay.
And, and you know what? Do this.
I'm just asking if you can say his name, that's all.
Lieutenant, yeah, Lieutenant Tracy brought a litigation to release the tapes. He wants them.
He wants them, okay.
And, and I want them.
Okay. He'll be, he's gonna be in court, I don't know what date that hearing is gonna be heard, the, the oral argument. And I hope the judge releases it, too. So we have police officers that are also agreeing with us that they want the tapes released. So we might get it a lot sooner than, than the other judge.
I mean, 'cause honestly, you know, couple of people made a good point. You know, am I on the tape? Are things being said about me?
There are a lot of people.
Would I want those things that were said about me out on the street? I don't know. That's the other thing. Are you protecting citizens? You say you're protecting citizens by not giving the op-er request for names of citizens. I, for one, would wanna know, at least if we were affected, you would call those people in, and you've let them know what's going on. Maybe their lives are in jeopardy. That concerns me. I must tell you, at one time, on the 10 years I did on the Board of Ed many years ago, we had a situation, and we called the people in that were affected by something that we found.
Yeah.
And we made sure we protected our parents and their kids.
Thank you for that. We have a situation here right now.
I would be very concerned, and I would hope that in the event you find that there are citizens with some kind of disparaging information on those tapes, that you have the decency to protect those citizens by calling them in and getting their permission to release information. Because I would be hard-pressed to find out that I'm living next door to a pedophile, and that might've been discussed on there. What kind of repercussions will we suffer as a town should disparaging information come out and cause the citizens a problem? That would concern me.
Thank you. We, we have developed a strategy for release when we get permission.
Okay.
To protect. Uh, and now, just so you know, there are some citizens who are not employees who feature prominently in terms of doing things and helping people that they shouldn't be helping in those tapes, and, and that'll come out also.
Helping? I'm not sure what that means, but.
Okay, that's enough.
How about conspiring?
Conspiring?
Let's replace helping with conspiring.
Did you say conspir?
Let's, let's replace helping with conspiring.
So, somewhere in the first week of October, we get an update on this.
I'm hoping.
Unless it's something's happened sooner and then I'm sure you'll put it out on Facebook or somewhere. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Excuse me, Ms. Gollman, Ms. Walker, please. Thank you.
Russell Perino, 220 Fabio Avenue. It's fair. Please. Mayor, Council. A few comments I'd like to make. I try not to get involved in the political bickering, I'll call it. I sit here at motion evenings and, and listen and pay attention. But when the attacks come at me personally and at the planning board that I share at the present time, I think it's my responsibility to speak up. There's been a series of accusations made back in, early in the year, I guess it was, and things calmed down. And I know we're in silly season now with, with, uh, election coming forward and, and everyone likes to have a scapegoat, at least the party that's looking to, uh, regain control of the borough's, uh, Borough Council. But I need to speak a little specifically about certain things that are said and I think, um, although I don't like to call attention to anyone's, uh, any group's, uh, news items that they put out, I think it's necessary because at the very foundation, I find them to be false. And they're false because the people that pose to be nonpartisan are everything but nonpartisan. And it's okay that they speak their piece, but they should say who they are, defend their position, who they represent and who they support, and say their piece. That's fine. But to hide behind this term of nonpartisan drives me crazy. Ms. Sabari got up at the Reorg Media, I believe it was, of this year and called it a bipartisan effort. And that's different from a nonpartisan effort, which is what's stated in their, their newsletter that goes out. The way I look at it is that any words that are contained within these, these newsletters that go out to every resident in this borough has to be looked at in the light of the entire premise of the publication, the group, is a partisan group. So, anything that flows from it, anyone asks me the question, I won't trust a word of Say who you are. Come out. Say you're partisan, say who you support, it's great. You ask me a question, I'll say who I support. It's no problem. It's a free country. But don't hide behind the shroud of nonpartisanship, trying to fool the residents. Those that may not speak English that well, that should remove these highlights and get scared with the scare tactic that I put in them. The attacks now on me personally and on our board, it's unacceptable. And I think it needs to be called out specifically over and over again.
I agree with you. It's fake news. Comes dangled with clips. Courtesy of Karen Guy.
So, just getting to specifics for a minute, in their last, uh, piece, there's a sentence in here that says, and I'll quote, "It makes no sense to us why the planning board continues to spend our tax dollars fighting Normandy's appeal of the planning board denial of the corporate building application. That denial is what has led to the borough's costly, affordable housing litigation." As if it's fact. Now, it's, it's, it's a commentary, so with that, there's some latitude. But to make an absolute statement like that by those who don't even know enough information to be able to even make that statement is outrageous. It's done for political purposes. It's delayed agreement at the planning board, of which the mayor has appointed the majority of the members. It's sure, it's clear, it's definite. So, those are the kind of things that, they're not even measuring their words anymore. It used to be, well, you, they think, it probably, we believe, now it's stated as fact. It's not true. And they don't know enough of information. They're claiming that they don't know, they know more information than every one of you and every member of the planning board and every professional that we have that's defending the town right now. So, unless they have to sidetrack, it's false. I'll be careful because it's in litigation about what I, what I say, but there's a couple of public filings that were made by 800 Silven, which I just want to quote a couple of them. They're public information, so I think it's fair that I, that I speak to them. I'm not gonna make any comment about them, but I'm going to state them. Number one is, and this is going back, uh, early part of the year, I believe, they said, the 800 Silven folks admitted the stagnant market for suburban office buildings. Okay. Then, later on, this, this year, there was another, uh, writing by 800 Silven and it said, and I'll quote, "It is 800 Silven's strong preference to pursue a rezoning allowing for its proposed inclusionary development as opposed to the planning board case, which concerns non-residential development. I ask the members of the, of the, of the council and the residents to dwell on that for a minute and to see if that may shed some light on the false allegations made by Eye and the Cliffs and their editors." Now, turning to, to myself for a moment. Allegations were made in two different, well, in, in one, uh, one of Eye and the Cliffs' newsletters that suggested that I have a conflict of interest in hearing 800 Silven application. Okay, fair game. My skin is thick enough to take it, no problem. Next, uh, uh, edition comes out and they said that, okay, yeah, it didn't happen, it's not true. Okay, that, that's fine, all right? Even though the words that were used, the lead wanted to believe that maybe there was a conflict, but, you know, the judge didn't see it. The short of it is, if you use my name in the same sentence as a conflict of interest, you better be sure. And the judge ruled already, it's a public document, that they, the plaintiff failed to make a prima facie case that there was a conflict. So, when one makes that accusation, they should be ready to withdraw and to apologize when they find that it's not true. And I'm going to quote from, uh, this is also a public document that was filed on behalf of an intervenor in the planning board matter, um, by Ms. Geiger. She filed it, visa her words, she signed to them. And I'll quote, "It is impossible for any knowledgeable person who knows the chairman Perino's parents' history with the property, his own involvement and his appearance before the planning board in 2011 to believe that he would not be conflicted." Her words were, "It is impossible." Well, I guess it was possible because the judge has already ruled on it. So, these are the kind of things that, it's part of a lawsuit, I accept that it is, but it's nonsense. And she got up and parroted the same arguments made by 800 Silven, they were both dead wrong. And I want to thank the members of the council, this is all members. Carol, first and foremost, I know what you're doing, day in, day out. No one else seems to even realize, they're worried about the police chiefs and their tapes. You're working on this thing 24 hours a day, I know you are. Mayor, I know what you're doing and other members of the council. I don't need to admit anyone here, but there should be some recognition of the work that you're doing. The folks don't know. They should know. This is not a matter of the 800 Silven is right or wrong, it's a matter of you defending the borough, doing the best that you can, doing your jobs. And I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Perino, and thank you for your service as our chairperson. It's greatly appreciated. And I also want to thank you for highlighting for all of us the toxicity of Geiger and Sabari's political newsletter, Eye and the Cliffs. Anybody else wishing to be heard?
Yes, sir.
Andrew Nick F-54, Elm Street. I've not been to one of these in six, seven months and I probably haven't spoken at one in probably over a year. And it's kind of disturbing to see that nothing has really changed. Just a question for the members of the board over here. Are you guys older than three years old or six years old? Because I, I have two darling nephews who are three and six years old and they can handle conflicts better than you guys can. And with all the problems that this borough has right now, and there are problems, taxes, whatever, the police department, whatever you guys want to come up with, there are a lot of problems facing this town right now. It is just so disappointing to see that if I were to replace you guys with three and six-year-olds, they could probably run this town better than you can. That's all I have to say. Have a great day.
Thank you. I actually have one thing to say to you. And I'm, I'm glad you're actually here tonight because in listening to Chichaki's tapes, there's one particular moment that stands out and, and he basically says, um, he's boasting to a subordinate officer about saying that he gave the expletive, quote unquote, information about Kranjak to Andrew.
We don't know.
Who, who went to Terry Plucker, who in turn went to Senator Loretta Weinberg. He said, "Loretta Weinberg was the one who did the whole thing about Ziza." And that Loretta Weinberg supposedly told Terry Plucker that Loretta Weinberg would help me with this and put it out. He doesn't mention speaking with Jimmy in the hallway and urging Jimmy to let Andrew put it out in the Sunday paper. Everybody reads the Sunday paper. This guy will be hiding under a rock, is what Chachi says. Thank you, Andrew.
I'm just. I'm speechless, I've never.
Oh, no, I'm sorry. You'll have your opportunity. You'll have your opportunity.
I just have to say that I'm totally speechless as regards to this council.
I assure you, I believe in due process and you will have your opportunity also.
Is that a threat to me or something?
No, no, you, you won't be, you'll have due process, like everyone else. Everyone else has been doing things to hurt this town.
All I know is that this town is literally disintegrating and we're worried about my own son's right now.
Well, go look in the mirror. Thank you.
Bill, you know, you seem like a decent guy. You know, I went to school with your sister, we went to high school. You know, you know me, what type of guy I am, you know? I'm just so disappointed in how this has turned out, I really am.
As am I.
Are you saying the rest of us are not decent citizens, are you?
I'm saying that I have a relationship.
I'm just asking, you know, excuse me.
I'm saying that, Ms. McMorris.
No, no, excuse me.
I'm saying that I have a relationship with Mr. Wu over here. I've known him for several years. I consider him a very decent person. I'm not, sorry, I don't have a relationship with you or Mr. Park.
That's not the point.
You know, that I know you personally, I know Bill, and I was just saying that, my commentary to him, that's it.
I, I do have, uh, and I, I don't believe in the back and forth with, with residents, okay, but.
But you're engaging with me right now, but I'm, I'm, I'm up for it, I'm good spirit for it, so.
I'm communicating with you.
Okay.
You're on the fire department, correct? So, so can we not communicate? Can I not feel comfortable if I need to speak to you?
I have never.
Not when I had a question?
No, 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 absolutely. And just like, I have not been dismissive of anyone, I had a charming conversation with Ms. Eastwood prior to the meeting, I consider myself open to everybody that I'm not going to dismiss anybody. So, please.
Thank you. And I understand this public comment, but you came up here and you called all, you said, you stated, and by the way, I saw your nephews talk on Saturday and they're quite charming and they, uh, the older one came to play. You stated that your three and six-year-old nephew would do a better job than we.
I was referring to the entire, not just ours and these.
Okay, but let me just turn this on, on, on. You just heard Mr. Perino publicly state how hard we are working on what I feel is a very, very important issue for this borough. You just heard him say that, yet you got up right after him, quite clearly, let, let me finish. Ignored what he said and just came up here and insulted us. How do you expect people to react when you're calling them three and six-year-olds? And I'm gonna state, number one. Number two, Andrew, I've worked with you three years now and I've worked with you for the years before, uh, when I was on the council. You know, without getting into any detail, you know, your name is mentioned or believes to be mentioned. I'm not going into any other detail on that tape. The truth will be told when they're played and I look forward to hearing the, all the truths about who these people are that are on these tapes. But there are also documents, Andrew, with your name on it, going after me and my husband at the Chachi discovery. So, so please, this town cannot heal when we have people like yourself on a fire department who are going after residents too. What your rights are and not, I don't know, that's, but of course, I'm just saying, there's no.
You want to leave now?
I, I, Ms. McMorris.
You want to, you want to leave now? I mean, because this isn't going well, okay?
Ms. McMorris, I, I respect your opinion on that matter.
Don't say that.
Uh, I respect what you just said, that's fine. With regards to my comments, I believe you misunderstood it.
Okay.
Because my point was that if you all worked together.
Okay, thanks.
In a better manner, I'm not done yet, sir. If you all worked together in a better manner.
That's what I'm also trying, Andrew.
If you all worked in a better manner, just imagine what this council could achieve. Right now, you're, you're working on the Poet stuff, that's commendable. I'm not aware of what you're doing only because I've just not chosen to inform myself about it.
Litigation and certain things.
Which is fine. I have no problem with that. But given all the issues that this town has, we would be much better served if you guys and you guys instead of spending the first two hours of the evening going back and forth about whatever you want to go over, working together to resolve problems. Mayor, you've said that, you know, if, what's the line that you say? If you're willing to work with me, I'm willing to work with you. Well, that's a two-way street.
It is.
And, you know, I would like to see you try to work with them, just as I would like to see them work with you.
I'll work with anyone.
Well, prove it. So far, so far, in all fairness to you, you know, I've, I've come up here, I've tried to be respectful, I've tried to treat you all with decency, you know, you may have not understood my analogy and for that, I'm sorry that you did not. It wasn't meant to insult you, it was meant to show that you guys, you've worked together, you know, you guys could do great things. But, sir, you need to also understand that as well. I mean, you've been mayor since 2016 and you've done some good things, but you've also done some bad things. That's my right as a citizen to comment that you've done. I don't have to like everything you do.
No, I understand that. And that's fair. I'll take criticism, but what I want to accept is people who are targeting me, uh, and I always suspected that.
Sir, I've.
But now, now, I know for a fact because our police chief walks around with a microphone and he forgets to turn it off. Okay? This is the person that we're paying $232,000 for every year.
Sir.
All right? And if you don't want those laws to apply to him, make a list right there, like I asked the other gentleman, Mr. Stiber, Dr. Stiber, to make a list of the laws that you don't want to apply to your friends.
Sir, you are engaging.
The sheet is so blank, by the way.
You are engaging, as your attorney said, in the process to do what you need to do. If that's what this council feels that they need to do, so be it. I have not voiced any objection one way or the other.
Your self-righteousness is lost on me, sir. It's lost, really, because I heard those tapes.
In reality.
Okay, so self-righteousness?
In reality, uh, in reality, for the past year and a half, I've stepped away from politics.
Oh, you haven't?
I haven't been involved in any campaign.
Actually, no. I, I, we have discovered.
I haven't been involved. That's great. Uh, you know?
Okay.
I haven't been involved in any campaign, I haven't been involved in any groups, I haven't been involved in anything. I've stepped back so that I don't have to expose myself to this. I came here tonight because I just wanted to see what was going on before the election, you know? You, you, Mayor, you know, for whatever reason you've chosen to threaten or attack me or whatever it is that you.
No, it's not for any reason.
Whatever it is, whatever it is.
It's based on discovery produced by Chief Chachi. You're all over it, sir. And then you come here and you have such righteous indignation.
So far, so far, Mayor, every person that's gotten up in this room, you say, is all over this. So, I, I, I tend to dismiss that.
I, I think we're done because I'll, we'll see you later.
Andrew, I look forward to allowing all the residents to have the opportunity to hear what's on these tapes. And then, I look forward to hearing what every single person has to say after they hear the disgusting, deplorable, degrading, humiliating conversations held and referencing other residents who may not even know that they were being referenced. We don't know that yet, okay? We're not gonna get into those details.
That's your prerogative.
No, that's gonna be everyone's prerogative and everybody should care.
By the way, what I.
I would like to ask this, every resident should have a right to know.
What I read from before is a public document, so if anyone wants to pull it, you're welcome to. There's more in there. Okay, thank you.
I will make sure.
Anybody else wishing to be heard?
Lizette for an Oprah. Have a great evening, you know, everybody.
You can operate in the courtroom.
Anybody else?
Please don't, I, I don't have that.
Okay, uh, have a motion to close the public.
So will.
Second. All in favor?
All right.
Okay, let's do, uh, payment of claims, resolution 18 dash 179, payment of claims, August 9th, 2018, through September 12th, 2018, $6,579,467.85.
I have, I have a question, uh, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to ask a question to the, uh, the Borough Administrator. What is the status with the legal bills from the Borough Attorney?
I received one and, uh.
One for what one?
No, I'm sorry.
No, two and then, um, that's six others.
The fourth day of the year, it will be four in the morning, um, very shortly.
Okay, so the two, um, bills that you.
I'll review them for any.
That's four more than two.
Do you know what ones they were for?
February.
Okay.
And, uh, I saw the day, and, you know, we have more than one. Okay, try to...
Okay, have a motion?
So move.
Second?
Second, can I vote?
I have to recuse on one check, so do we have to vote? I think we have to vote separately, then?
You can pull it out, I think.
God, they made me, you have to say that, you have to say everything except for the one check number, and then...
Do you have that?
I have the check number right here.
Yeah, yeah.
So I, I don't think I ever recused myself for any of the checks that was paid for litigation that I brought, 'cause no one had said...
Yeah, so we're, we're at the meeting now, these are things that you need to discuss before we roll.
I had to pay for my pass. This is a separate thing.
All right.
This is not litigation, it's not litigation passed.
People roll.
I had to pay for it, out of pocket, because... Cancel, or is that a preference? Cancel persons of versa?
Yes.
E. Park?
Yes.
O.?
Yes.
McMorris? Yes, all, except for check number four, five, four, seven, seven. Four, five, four, seven, seven. Uh-huh.
Yes. Yes.
Resolution twenty eighteen, uh, one eighty, resolution authorizing agreement with State of New Jersey for green forestry grants. Need a motion?
So move.
Second?
Second.
Councilperson Zaverta?
Yes.
E. Park?
Yes.
O.?
Yes.
McMorris?
Yes.
And Park?
Yes.
Woo?
Yes.
One eighty-one, resolution of award to Mazer Consulting for Riverside Cooperative.
So move.
Second.
Councilperson Zaverta?
Yes.
E. Park?
Yes.
O.?
Yes.
McMorris?
Yes.
And Park?
Yes.
Woo?
Yes.
One eighty-two, resolution authorizing shared services contract with County of Bergen for snowpiling.
So move.
Second.
Councilperson Zaverta?
Yes.
E. Park?
Yes.
O.?
Yes.
McMorris?
Yes.
And Park?
Yes.
Woo?
Yes.
One eighty-three, resolution authorizing approval of breaking AIDS-ride bicycle events.
So move.
Second.
Councilperson Zaverta?
Yes.
E. Park?
Yes.
O.?
Yes.
McMorris?
Yes.
And Park?
Yes.
Woo?
Yes.
One eighty-four, resolution authorized volunteer tuition credit program?
So move.
Second.
Councilperson Zaverta?
Yes.
E. Park?
Yes.
O.?
Yes.
McMorris?
Yes.
And Park?
Yes.
Woo?
Yes.
One eighty-five.
So you wanna recommend Ms. Eastwood for this position, correct? For, to point, as a municipal representative of Bergen County Community Development? So I just wanna say that, you know, Ms. Eastwood holds many positions in Englewood Cliffs. She is also the Shade Tree Committee, uh, the head of the Shade Tree Committee, she is also, um, I believe, a mayor's designee for the planning board. And that being said, again, you have not answered my question. So I have a, I got this off the internet, you gave me a great idea, Ms. Eastwood. So apparently, Ms. Eastwood, who hasn't answered my question, did in fact send out letters to residents in town. And I didn't wanna bring this up, because again, you keep haranguing me, but I have letters that she sent around to people in town, postmarked, September eleventh, September thirteenth, with two letters that she brought to council regarding my house. Secondly, this is a letter that she sent to, I'll tell you, Mr....
Does this have to do with the representative position?
Okay, because this goes to her, her background.
Well, the, the, the...
Can I finish, mayor?
Just recuse yourself.
No, I don't need to recuse myself. I, I can take a vote, but I have point of order, you recognize, I wanna speak.
But this, this...
So she sent out this letter to Mr. and Mrs. Glenn Pogarian of Eighth Second Street in Englewood Cliffs, New Jersey. She also voted on their variance on July thirteenth, twenty seventeen, it's actually on the internet, you can look, uh, on the website, where she passed the variance for an extension of their home. Um, and so we talk about abuse of power. So she sits and votes on the planning board, and yet she pulls out, uh, permit applications, everything about my house, and she knows that these people are aware that she voted yes on their variance, 'cause they were there. She sends them letters of disparaging words about my house, and you don't think that's inappropriate? You don't think she's abused her power as a, as a, as a mayor's designee for the Shade Tree Committee?
Do you agree with...
What is that? I don't care about that.
Hold on.
That has nothing to do with this.
Hold on a second.
All right?
What, what you're talking about is different than what...
It's very inappropriate that...
This, this resolution is for Bergen County Community Development.
Yes, she should not have any positions for the county, for the county, for the borough, because she's crossed the line, abused her power, right? She's never answered a question, and I'm sure if I pull up all the variances that she voted on, passing those variances, she's probably sent those letters to those people as well. So are you telling me that her character is fit enough to be another representative for us?
Are you finished? Are you finished? Are you finished?
Okay. Just wanna, mayor, mayor...
Well, I just wanna say this, I wanna, I wanna actually acknowledge Ms. Eastwood for all the work she does for this town. She's very diligent, um, and dependable, and I apologize that you're being harangued by Ellen Park, who's on council.
Right, because she's sending letters to people in town about me.
Now, now, now that's a point of disorder, okay? So we're done.
I want an investigation, Emery.
You said it before, two hearings ago, now I'm telling you.
Not to Ellen Park, not to Ellen Park. There is a resolution on the agenda. You, the, the person being considered, is you have a conflict with her, and you have just clearly demonstrated it, and you should recuse from voting on the current resolution.
Absolutely not.
Excuse me, excuse me, please let me finish, because I need to make a record.
Okay.
You previously were advised that you had a conflict of interest with respecting Ms. Eastwood on a prior occasion, because you had filed a quasi-criminal complaint against her.
It was dismissed.
Excuse me, now you are standing here again, talking about this whole problem that you have, and, and attacking in the context of a resolution of appointment. If you have a problem, and you are relating it directly to any position that Ms. Eastwood holds, please discuss it with me in private, because if there needs to be something done, it needs to be discussed in closed session, and it needs to be decided by the mayor and council, not all of, not here in a public forum. This is inappropriate, the way you're handling this.
And you've displayed such animus towards her, how could you possibly vote?
Okay, let, let...
It's not, it's not possible, Ellen.
Okay, you, you decide how you want.
I, again, like I said, I don't have a problem with, Ms. Eastwood, except for the fact, this is, she has very poor character.
Have a motion, please. Have a motion.
Emery.
Please.
Have a motion.
So move.
Put it into a package and mail it.
All right, we had a motion.
You don't respond to anything I say. I sent you an email for months and months and months, and again...
I told you I wasn't going to respond to that. I told you then, and I told you tonight.
All right, let's have a vote, we had a, a motion from Councilman McMorris, and a second from Councilman Wu. We'll call.
Councilperson Zaverta?
No.
E. Park?
No.
O.?
No.
McMorris?
Yes.
And Park?
Yes.
Woo?
Yes.
Mayor Crandrick?
Yes.
One eighty-six, resolution authorizing encroachment and hold harmless agreement for Tenth Summit Street.
So move.
Second.
Councilperson Zaverta?
Yes.
E. Park?
Yes.
O.?
Yes.
McMorris?
Yes.
And Park?
Yes.
Woo?
Yes.
One eighty-seven, resolution authorizing grant application and contract with NJ DLT for various, various roadways.
So move.
Improvement projects, Pershing Road, Summit Street, and Johnson Avenue.
So move.
Second.
Who seconded it?
Me.
Mark.
Mark Park.
Councilperson Zaverta?
Yes.
E. Park?
Yes.
O.?
Yes.
McMorris?
Yes.
And Park?
Yes.
Woo?
Yes.
One eighty-eight, resolution authorizing purchase of fire safety equipment under New Jersey State Contract?
So move.
Second. Councilperson Zaverta?
Yes.
E. Park?
Yes.
O.?
Yes.
McMorris?
Yes.
And Park?
Yes.
Woo?
Yes.
One eighty-nine, resolution authorizing negotiations as discussed in closed session regarding lavery, salvage, abramides, and Cohen. No, you just said the, the appointment of attorney.
No, no, we're not on that, we're on one eighty-nine.
Need a motion?
So move.
One more?
Yes.
What, what was the final decision we made on it?
This, one eighty-nine is strictly for the authorization for negotiation as discussed in closed session.
That's what I wanted to clarify.
That's why Ellen is...
Okay, gotcha, sorry. Need a motion?
So move.
Second. Councilperson Zaverta?
Yes.
E. Park?
Recused.
O.?
Yes.
McMorris?
Yes.
And Park?
Yes.
Woo?
Yes.
One ninety, resolution appointing litigation counsel for borough representative for year twenty eighteen.
So move. Second.
Councilperson Zaverta?
No.
E. Park?
No.
O.?
No.
McMorris? Wait, this is, they don't, I'm confused, you don't wanna, the borough has to be represented, you don't wanna appoint a lawyer? I'm lost, what is this, what is this for?
This is for the year two thousand eighteen, for litigation's that may come. Litigations, current litigations, and those that may come.
Wait, I can wait a second. That's all it is?
Look out.
But I wanna understand what I'm on. So they're voting no. They don't wanna, so you don't want the borough to defend the matter of James Tracy versus Borough, you're voting no on that?
That's not what it is.
Yes, it is, it's in here. It's for the year two thousand eighteen.
Any item, or any borough council.
No, no, I just wanna, just, it's in, it's in one ninety, it mentions that.
I, I know, but I'm just telling what the council votes, they...
It's for the year two thousand eighteen.
Any item.
And it could be others, it will be...
But that, that, that wasn't included. Tracy really...
It won't include anything, anything and everything, the possibility.
We hope this happens.
I understand, but why?
The borough has to be defended, so I'm gonna vote yes for appointing a lawyer for the borough.
Can we continue to vote?
Okay. I say yes. McMorris? I say yes. And Park?
Yes. Yes.
Woo?
Yes.
Mayor Crandrick?
Yes.
One ninety-one, resolution appointing litigation counsel for borough clerk, twenty eighteen, Oprah matters.
So move. Second.
Councilperson Zaverta?
Yes.
E. Park? This is for the whole, this is for all matters, too.
Any Oprah matter.
Any Oprah matter, same thing. Litigation is litigation. Oh, come on, guys, right, no problem.
All right, let's go.
Let's go. E. Park?
Yes.
O.?
Recused.
McMorris?
Recused.
Yes. She did the last one. Why are you questioning my recusal?
I, I thought maybe you may have seen.
And Park?
Yes.
Woo?
Yes.
One ninety-two, authorized tax appeal settlement, one eighty-one chestnut.
So move.
Second. Councilperson Zaverta?
Yes.
E. Park?
Yes.
O.?
Yes.
McMorris?
Yes.
And Park?
Yes.
Woo?
Yes.
One ninety-three, resolution rejecting bids and authorizing rebid of security cameras?
So move. Second.
Councilperson Zaverta?
No.
E. Park?
No.
O.?
One ninety-three, resolution rejecting bids and authorizing rebid of security cameras.
So move. Second.
Counselperson Zaverta?
No.
E. Park?
No.
O.?
Abstained.
These are for security cameras that the police department need, you're voting no to that. Uh, I'm voting yes.
McMorris?
Yes.
And Park?
Yes.
Woo?
Yes.
One ninety-four, authorized transfer of liquor license persons to person?
So move. Second.
Counselperson Zaverta? E. Park?
Yes.
O.?
Yes.
McMorris?
Yes.
And Park?
Yes.
Woo?
Yes.
Next one is ordinance, first reading with a public hearing on September twenty-sixth at seven thirty P.M. An ordinance establishing mandatory inclusion of affordable housing through the use of percentage set aside. Motion?
So move. Second.
Counselperson Zaverta? E. Park?
I abstained as well, we didn't get our information till two fifty-five today and we just got.
Ellen.
O.?
It's true.
Ellen, you were a half hour late to the meeting and you would have understood what was going on.
No, you know what, I wanted to ask Jeff Serenian, who wasn't here today, and that was given to us at two fifty-five today.
Actually, you, you missed a real good part of the discussion because you were late half an hour.
You were a half hour late.
So you just drew a lot of attention to yourself.
That's fine.
O.?
I'm also abstaining, I was at the close session, uh, but.